Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council, a regular meeting of the Madera Public Financing Authority Board, and a special meeting of the Madera Housing Authority. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Folie Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson, absent. Councilmember Garcia, absent. Councilmember Hawley, absent.
Oh, boy, working on a skeleton crew, but we'll get it done. Thank you so much, Alicia. We have with us this evening from Central Valley Church Pastor Josh Blair, who will lead us in the invocation. If you'll stand with me, please.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you this evening to lift up this council, its members, Lord, the staff that support them, that you would give them wisdom, guidance, and direction as they lead this city. Father, we also lift up our school administration, staff, and teachers, Lord, as we pray for your peace in our schools and bring in your wisdom into our students. Father, we also pray for the peace and safety of our law enforcement and our first responders, God, that this would be a city known for its peace, and that your hand would be upon us, and that your name would be lifted high not only in our city, not only in our lips, but in our hearts. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Blair. If you'll join me in the pledge, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I'll ask if there's any council member wishing to add or amend or change any items on the agenda. If not, I'll entertain a motion. May I move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to public comment, the first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak under this definition of public comment? I have some friends with me in the audience from Pershing Elementary School. I had the pleasure, not long ago, of meeting with these students. They're part of the robotics team, which I believe there's a few elementary schools now that are adopting the road to robotics, thanks to our world champion robotics team here in Madera. And these, uh, these fine young students had some fantastic questions. I had a chance to answer some of the questions, not just about robotics, but about, uh, about how we grow in Madera and how businesses start in Madera. And actually, a lot of their questions were about downtown. So at that, at that meeting, I had extended an open invitation. At any time, if you want to come to a council meeting, you are certainly welcome to. And we're happy that Ms. Christensen is here to introduce, it looks like we have a few students here from Pershing.
Yeah. Okay, Olivia. Sheller, explain what we're doing. Right here. Off the microphone. Hello, we are the Pershing Robotics Team. This year, our project is called City Shapers, and the challenge is to find something in our city that needs improvement. We met with Mayor Madellin and discussed the need for a new city hall. The first question I have is why do we need city hall, and how will it benefit Madera?
Well, thank you so much for that. Normally, it's the discretion of the mayor to answer questions. We have people that come to our meeting, and they speak during public comment, and we get to hear certain questions or concerns that people have. But it's a unique situation this evening where we are going to answer a couple of questions. So I'm gonna maybe defer to one of my colleagues, if they would like to answer that question, why do we need a city hall? And I'll be honest, that even, that morning when we spoke, we were, I was being asked about what we need in the city of Madera, and I said, "I would love a new city hall." And so, hence the question. So would any one of my colleagues like to answer that particular question? Councilwoman Gallegos?
I'll start. I think it's important that we look at a new city hall because we have over, outgrown this building, and we're looking to put some of our departments in another facility. And when that happens, when people come to us for information, they're gonna have to go to different, hop from places to places to get that information. We have, some of our employees have boxes underneath their desk, filing cabinets full of information, that we just stack stuff on top of stuff because there's, there's not much room. We have meetings where we have people chairs on the sides. We have nowhere to put residents when they have concerns, they're standing. We put them in the lobby with a, a TV to view our meeting for information. So it's kind of hard. It's just easier when, when people come to pay their water bills or their garbage, to sign up for garbage. We don't really have a waiting room for them. It's your, it's a little area to stand in, and when everybody's bill's due on the twenty-fifth, and they don't have money until the twenty-fifth, the line is out the door. And, and part of that is because we're a really small building. If you go way back, students, that area used to be our police department. So we've outgrown it and built a new police department. Now, we have outgrown that also. So it's important that we kind of look at that in our future. That is, is it, what you're saying, I get. And I hear you toured city hall, so you got to see?
Not yet.
Not yet. When you tour, you'll see how everybody's kind of on top of each other, and it's well needed in the city of Madera. That we've grown this, this census 2020 will give us a really good idea of how many people are in our city at this time. But thank you for all your work.
Yeah, very good question. Thank you for that answer, councilwoman. I really appreciate it. Is there another question, or somebody else want to introduce themselves?
If you build a new city hall, what do we, what would you do with this one?
Well, that's a very good question. Councilman Rodriguez?
I'd, I'd, I'd have to defer that back to staff. At this moment, I don't think I have a clear answer, but I'm sure that there's a lot of creative ideas that we can create something with this, uh, former city hall, if that was the case.
Yeah, very, very good question. Actually, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but we used to have our police department in this building along with all the staff that Councilwoman Gallegos was talking about. So talk about being crunched. We were fortunate enough to build a brand-new police department. So maybe in some way, we might have this as just a separate department. As councilwomen discussed, our engineering department may be moving out of here, or should be moving out of here very soon. So, yeah, very good question, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we'll certainly make use of it. We're kind of getting a little short on time here, but please, come on up.
Is it possible to remodel the current city hall?
Oh, another very good question. Mayor Protem, any thoughts?
I think you can remodel it, but there's only so much you can do before you probably need a new facility. But again, I'd have to still answer from Councilmember Rodriguez for that, to staff what they actually need here, beyond what is actually here, and what we can rehab or refurbish.
I think one of the things we had talked about with, with downtown, you had asked about the, uh, the unfortunate burning of the building and what we would put there. And I think when we talked about all the different things we can do, like possibly a city hall, or restaurants, or whatever, we talked about parking, remember that? That sometimes we can build a big, beautiful building. And so if we were to remodel this one and maybe put a second or even a third story, that would be awesome, but then that's gonna come with a big parking requirement. So all the fun stuff that our engineering and planning department get to do on, on a daily basis and bring us all the fun stuff, all the decision-makers, and you are certainly, as City Shapers, starting to understand a little bit about what we go through here. I think one of the questions you had asked also was how many people are involved in something like that? In, in discussing with, uh, with our, uh, planning director, Mr. Boyle, I think I had answered about forty to fifty people can actually touch a particular permit or a particular item. And it seems like a lot of people, but that's kind of what it takes to get things done, especially in government. But very good question. It's very great to see you guys. Is there one more? Does somebody want to come up and ask something real quick?
Uh, thank you all for, thank you all for your time here. We will consider all these things while constructing our project. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. You too. You guys are fantastic. And that invitation still stands. Whenever you want to come down here and spend a few minutes at a council meeting, please, please do so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I would also say that if, if in the future you want to bring something like this, the questions ahead of time would help us because I, I have a lot of ideas of what we can do. But I think, you know, we can actually make a nice little workshop, and I think that would help out not only for us as your council members, but also you as the constituents and also students. I'm sure there's a lot of creative ideas that we can come up with together. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You know, it's been said before that our fine police department and our first responders, they don't get a chance to, to call a timeout. They have to react, and a lot of times in life and death situation, and we're fortunate that we get a chance to hear from our staff, we get a chance to have questions ahead of time, we get a chance to have information, not only for weeks, sometimes for months, ahead of time before we make a decision. And so each time that happens, we, we want to make sure that we have all the information first, and so I certainly agree. Sometimes it always helps. But when I say that, I always bring up our police department and such a fine job that they do here in the city of Madera under great leadership, such as our chief, Chief Lawson, who's filling in this morning for Mr. Rodriguez, and those split decisions that they make every single day. So again, thank you all very, very much for being here. Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll move into consent calendar. Consent calendar, matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it'll be considered separately. Is there anybody from the audience wishing to further discuss or define any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll ask if council has any questions about the consent calendar. Seeing none, I'll call for action on the consent calendar as presented.
I so move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item C1. C1 is a public hearing on a rezone and general plan amendment. Under the public hearing, there's a consideration of adoption of a resolution amending the general plan, and item number two is a consideration of introduction of an ordinance rezoning six parkles, six parcels encompassing 1.5 acres located on the southwest corner of the intersection of West 7th Street and South G Street from the R3 High Density to the PF designation, which is Public Facility Zone District. Mr. Boyle?
Thank you, Mayor Madellin, and that is a mouthful. Our first item on tonight's agenda is indeed a general plan amendment and rezone that will facilitate the development of a new Madera County District Attorney's Office. The proposed location for the district attorney's office will be south and west of the intersection of West 7th Street in, and South G Street. Five of the six parcels under consideration tonight for rezone have been prepared for redevelopment. One building, uh, one vacant building remains on the, on the site and would be demoed as a component of any development of the property. Important to note, though, tonight's land use preparations do not include any consideration for development of the site. That would be something that the county would then move forward once the land has been, been prepared through these entitlements. First, the general plan. The general plan currently is in the R3, pardon me, the HD High Density General Plan Land Use Designation that provides for the greatest density of residential development, and that's consistent with a general plan that ex, that anticipated a higher density of land use of residential development along the freeway corridor in proximity to the gateway alignment. As the courthouse has been developed over time, it's only logical to allow for an extension of those office, legal-type office extensions, and so the general plan amendment will allow for a change to the public and semi-public, uh, general plan land use designation, and that blue color on the map would bleed south along between H and G Street. The general plan amendment is adopted by resolution of the city council, and a resolution consistent with that is attached as an, as an exhibit to your staff report. Zoning on the site, the rezone requests a change from the R3 High Density to the PF Public Facility Zone District. Currently, the general plan, I mean, the zoning is consistent with that HD General Plan Land Use Designation. A change to the PF facility would provide for consistency with the, um, general plan PNSP, Public and Semi-Public, um, Land Use Designation. The council takes action on the ordn, on the rezone via the process of an ordinance, and tonight you have an ordinance before you that would, um, provide for introduction of the, of the ordinance providing for the rezone. In support of the actions tonight, the Planning Commission forwarded a resolution, also a part of your packet, that supports the general plan amendment and a rezone on the subject properties. In conjunction with the Planning Commission's actions, the Planning Commission also approved a mitigated, pardon me, a negative declaration consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act in advance of forwarding the general plan and the rezone for your discretionary approval. That said, staff would recommend, the staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council, after considering public testimony this evening, adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment and introduce the ordinance rezoning the subject property. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Any questions of Mr. Boyle by council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item? As mentioned before, sir, it's optional for your name and address.
My name is Zeke Rubio, and I'm representing the property at, at 318 South G Street. My question is, what is the process once it gets adopted by the council?
Mr. Boyle, you want to answer that, please?
Sure. Thank you. Great question. In this instance, since the properties are, are the possession of the county, the, these land use preparations in terms of the general plan and a zoning to provide for the correct land use designations and zoning for development of the district attorney's offices are, as your, as your staff report noted, are being done in a collaborative effort such that the plant, such that the city will prepare that land with the correct zoning and general plan land use designations. Now, in that the property is the county's, any development of the site would be processed via their land use agencies, via their planning department. Any construction would be facilitated and approved via the, the county's building department. It's, uh, it'll be their land, so essentially, the subsequent development of the property will be facilitated by the county.
And what's the timeline for this, for this process to actually proceed and get started?
I don't know the exact timeline. I know that the county has met and collaborated with planning staff, planning and engineering staff, on some conceptual designs. As an example, the, they've worked with the city engineer, making sure that there's the correct infrastructure in place to provide for the development of professional offices on the site. They've worked with the planning department, looking at the, the development standards that would be applicable to a public facility zone district. But what they haven't shared is their timeline to construction. I, I would expect that there's some window into the future here because staff provided them meaningful comments as related to their first conceptual design, and we haven't seen a follow-up second design that we would, I think that as a courtesy, they would provide to us in advance of moving forward with, with formal construction documents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rubio, and I'm glad you're here. When there was, I see some other neighbors in the area that are here as well. When the courthouse was being built, I understand that there was concern in the neighborhood as well, and I can't remember if it was sidewalks or lack thereof, what the construction was gonna look like. And, and I believe they worked relatively well with the neighborhood as far as construction and what things would look like. And my assumption is the same thing would happen in this particular development. So just for the record, Mr. Boyle, any other decisions? Once we get past this one, would that be here at the city, or whether it's design development or moving forward, it would then be at the hands of the county?
It would be in the county's hands. As I noted, I'm sure that the county will provide some opportunity for some follow-up feedback on, before they move to formal construction documents, but after that point in juncture, I think that all of the work would be in-house via the county.
So my suggestion for the neighbors would be to make contact with the county and, when they have it on their agenda, to do so. And I'm sure they have the same policy here, an open-door policy in their, their planning department as well, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Rubio, for being here, and the rest of you, it's good to see you. Any other questions regarding this particular item? I'll close the comment from the public. I'll bring it back to council. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. And we have two separate ones, if you don't mind, this evening.
So move to adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment from item C1-1?
It's been approved to, I mean, it's been moved to approve item C1-1, the adoption of the resolution amending the general plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and move to introduce the ordinance rezoning the subject property as presented in item C1-2.
Second.
It's been properly moved, once again, and seconded to approve item C1-2, the introduction of the ordinance rezoning six park, six, huh, said it again, six parcels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C2, this is also a public hearing and consideration of two particular items, first being a public hearing and consideration of a resolution of the city council authorizing the annexation of territory to, to the CFD 2005-01, and authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting the levy to the qualified electors. And the second portion of that is consideration of a resolution calling a special election and submitting to the voters of Annexation Number Six of the City CFD 2005-01. Mr. Boyle?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Our second item of tonight's public hearing agenda is the sixth annexation into CFD 2005-01. A primer beforehand, because CFDs continue to be topical, and in advance of decisions on the part of the council, I think it's always important to have a refresher on exactly what the CFD is, what it does. So let's, let's take a step back before we take a step forward. A CFD is what is formed by the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982, and it was established such that a local agency could create a community facilities district for the purpose of providing facilities and services. A CFD is formed for financing purposes only and is governed by the agency that formed it. In this case, the city of Madera formed CFD 2005-01. The response to the lack of adequate financing for public capital facilities and services, that's what it's in response to, a post Prop 13 era where alternative approaches to service delivery financing were and remain today necessary, remembering Prop 13 and its caps on annual increases in assessments to property values. Unfortunately, our, 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 um, annual inflation rates have not stabilized along with our, our property tax assessments, consequently, a need for alternative financing. CFDs are regulated by the state of California, and the services and improvements that a Melrose CFD can finance include streets and sewers and other basic infrastructure, police, fire, ambulances, schools, parks, libraries, and the like. By law, the CFD is also entitled to recover expenses needed to form the CFD and administer the annual special taxes, and in, in some cases, bonded debt. The CFD is not a bonded CFD and carries no repayment of debt. In terms of CFD 2005-01, the purpose of CFD 2005-01 is to levy an annual special tax to finance police protection services, fire protection and suppression services, park maintenance, and storm drainage system operations and maintenance. CFD 2005-01 was formed for the purpose of funding that gap between revenue generated by new development and the cost of delivering the services desired. Fiscal analysis, I, was completed in order to identify the impacts of new development on the general plan, and in our workshop, we looked at how those various factors were built into an under, into the initial assessments and the subsequent multipliers that are in place today, initially in 2005, an annual assessment of 311, and today, that's at about $449, um, in annual tax per unit. The tax is deposited in the general fund, since the impacts are specific to the general fund, so we can trace those dollars into the city's coffers, and then they're released into the general fund to be expended for those specific purposes. The utilization of the tax is purposely broad, such that the city may finance any services or facilities permitted to be financed under the act. Lately, CFDs are topical in staff circles because, because of our parks acquisition ordinance, we are building more and more parks, and those parks are going to serve the very subdivisions that we're annexing into a CFD. And those parks need parks ma, maintenance, and the CFD acts as a natural mechanism to provide that maintenance, where that funding stream was most certainly a concern of the Parks Department when we enacted our parks acquisition ordinance. So let's look at annexation number six.
I'm sorry, Chris. I, I appreciate the step back before we move forward.
Okay.
But just since we're on that subject, and for clarification- we're on that subject, and for clarification, can you briefly explain, before the CFDs were in place, whose responsibility was it? Where did the funding come from for those impacts to the community?
Well, there was no bridge between, there was a shortcoming in how services were provided. That shortfall moved steadily larger as a gap between property tax and the cost of delivering services due to inflation went up. At some point in juncture, the city opted to establish CFD 2005-01 to address that issue. Some cities have multiple CFDs that speak to providing a gap between the cost of delivering services and revenue that's generated as a result of property tax collection that would be a typical of residential development. And only residential development is annexed into the CFD. Other cities may have multiple CFDs that are specific to individual projects that, for one reason or another, revenue generation doesn't meet the services that are demanded. The council will be looking at multiple CFD annexations into 2005-01 in the next few months because there's been tremendous residential development that has come along. I can say right now that we have one CFD that's in the pipeline. I spoke with another developer on 182 lots that will annex, will begin the application to annex in the next couple of weeks, and you have on your upcoming agenda a prepayment option for the downtown residential development. So the purpose of those is to offset costs generated by a project versus the cost of delivering those services. And there's lots of examples that one could utilize in providing a rationale as to why that is so.
Sure, I appreciate that. I didn't want to get into a workshop atmosphere, I just thought it was important to do so that, in a nutshell, it was our general fund that was actually making up that difference as growth and opportunity and development went forward.
And in our last workshop, I acknowledged that, once those revenues are, they're coming, they're billed to a specific line, and then they're released into the general fund, I asked the council whether they would want to have a better handle on how those monies were expended, that our current accounting system doesn't place that emphasis upon where those monies go. They're expended via the general fund, but we don't, by and large, have a line item for how those monies are expended. I think we don't, I think if I'm going with my gut here, we have something like $350,000 worth of CFD revenues collected last year, and that this particular annexation of 52 acres will provide for the development of 249 lots. There's 945 lots in the CFD right now, and so you're looking at about, you know, a 25% increase. And if you look at the other residential development that's coming on, each of those units amount to something like $449 in today's dollars. And so those monies will become more meaningful. I don't want to minimize the fact that there's $350,000 that are generated by our current CFD, and that should increase incrementally by 249 parcels as development occurs. But $349,000 maybe doesn't go as far as it did in 1977. And we're looking at the development of parks right now, where, you know, that doesn't develop an acre of park space. So, and those are the challenges we want to deliver to the taxpayers of the city, a more livable, walkable, and sustainable community that includes park space. So includes quick response times for police and fire, where the city continues to grow outward. Those are the challenges that emergency responders are faced with, and our CFD helps to bridge that gap and to provide those services the citizens want and need.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. Councilwoman Gallegos has a question.
Mr. Boyle, I don't know if you can answer this, or really quick, and maybe I don't remember, because we did go over this a while back, and you did answer some of it. So if you go back a couple of slides, that went forward, and it says that the money will be used for service, suppression services, park maintenance, and storm damage. So you're saying that it all goes into the general fund, but there's not a percentage of that that goes to each of these things that we're saying that's being used for, police and fire, and all of these other things?
Exactly. The purpose of the CFD, as noted, is to be flexible, where the city can direct those monies where they're needed and necessary. And as I noted in our workshop, the council could provide direction to distribute those, you might have an annual review of those revenues that are generated by the CFD, and you might be able to personally direct those monies towards the individual components of the CFD that it's meant to serve. But at this point in juncture, the city doesn't have that accounting in place, but, you know, we work for the benefit of the council, and the council feels that that's beneficial. It certainly may become increasingly topical because the CFD is growing, the city is growing rapidly right now. You also, I haven't even mentioned Village D and the impacts and the implications of adding 40,000 residents to the city over perhaps a 25- or 30-year period. Those are wonderful opportunities, but at the same time, they introduce wonderful challenges that the council and staff have to be able to respond to and provide the same level of services, even though the city continues to grow outward.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
This seems to be a very important topic, and the public may be interested in this, and the rest of the council may be interested in the CFDs in general. If you're inclined to discuss CFDs in general, I'd suggest setting it up as a workshop to allow everybody to fully participate in it. The item this evening is with regards to a particular CFD. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that reminder. As I mentioned, I didn't want to go down that rabbit hole, but it has been an item of concern, not only for council but our public, so I just thought, maybe hit on those bullet points. But thank you for that reminder. So with that, I'm going to ask Councilman Rodriguez for his question, and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, and thanks for that input, Shannon. So I think I'll hold my comments until we bring that back. And more so, Chris, you know, with respects to that CFD, right? And just to go back to history just a bit more, so would it be safe to say that after Prop 13, municipalities then had a shortfall in tax revenues, and therefore you have mechanisms such as the CFD that'll collect for services such as what you described earlier, because of the lack of, or the gap that exists between this year and the services that are being performed by the city?
The short answer is yes. Almost instantaneously, cities began to struggle with a shortfall in revenues, cities and other pseudo-governmental agencies like school districts and the like.
And I'll leave it at that, Shannon. I don't want to pursue anymore, so with that, Mr. Mayor, that ends my question. So thank you, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Boyle, thank you very much. So if we can proceed.
I certainly don't want to ir the city attorney at this point in juncture, so we'll move into the issue at hand tonight. Appreciate your patience. So tonight, we're looking at annexation number six, which would provide for the annexation of 52.73 acres of land that's currently in six parcels. Remember back in September 4th, where we took the initiating steps of forming the CFD? On September 4th, the council adopted a resolution, adopting the boundary map, of which is shown here in this particular graphic, showing the territory proposed for annexation to the City of Madera's CFD. On that same date, you adopted a resolution declaring the city's intent to authorize annexation of those territories into the CFD, and you scheduled, as part of that resolution, you scheduled a public hearing date for October 16th, tonight. So we set the table on October 16th for, pardon me, on September 4th, for this October 16th exercise. Just for the sake of mapping purposes, the three circles on this graphic show the three areas which have six parcels now and are proposed for development with a total of 249 parcels. The steps tonight, you have a four-step process, and I'll just speak through the highlighted text because the verbiage within the overall call-out leads me to want to be brief. The first step would be authorizing the annexation of territory and authorizing the levy of a special tax. That would be the first resolution and the first step. The second resolution talks about calling for a special election. That said, the third step would be that special election held and declaring the certification of those results, with our last resolution making certain findings, certifying the results of the election, and adding that territory. With that said, staff recommends completion of the election and adoption of the specified resolutions necessary for the annexation of territory into CF 2005-01, and with that said, I'll turn over the proceedings to the mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle. I'll ask council if there's any questions, any further questions of Mr. Boyle regarding these items C-2. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item. Please come forward. Seeing none. We will take the first two items before we do the special election, first starting with item C-2-1, which is consideration of the resolution, and then on to C-2-2, and then after that, we will move to the special election. So I'll entertain a motion for item C-2-1.
I still move to approve C-2-1 as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And item C-2-2, this is a resolution in calling for a special election and submitting to the voters of annexation number six of the City CFD 2005-01.
I still move to approve C-2-2 as presented.
Second. Once again, properly moved and seconded to approve item C-2-2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three, as mentioned before, this is conduct a special election of the qualified electors of annexation number six of the City CFD 2005-01 and declaration and certification of the results thereof. With that, I still have the public hearing open. So at this time, I will call.
The City Clerk.
Okay, so the public hearing's still open at this point. I will call on the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I declare that notice of public hearing was published on October 2nd, 2019.
Thank you very much, Alicia. At this time, I will open for public comment. Any protest, comments, or questions from any interested parties, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I declare that no written protests were received, that there are less than 12 registered voters within the community facilities district, that written consents to holding the community facilities district elections today have been received from all landowners within the proposed annexation number six, and that I concur with the holdings of the special election for annexation number six.
Thank you very much, Alicia. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the city clerk.
Thank you again, Mayor. At this time, I would request that council consider adoption of resolutions listed on the report as item one and two, and if we can vote on each item separately, please.
Were those the two that we just voted on?
We voted on those. We're now moving to item three.
We jumped ahead of you, Alicia. Thank you very much for that. So I will now call for the special election.
Yes, and this would be the opportunity for the city clerk to open any ballots that she has received.
Is it fair at this time to explain why there's just one ballot?
I can certainly do that, and that's because there's only one landowner.
At this time for development, there's just one landowner, hence, one ballot.
What? I believe that's the case. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was only one landowner for the land on Crown. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's one ballot, because there is one landowner, and that landowner has one vote per each acre or portion thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
As to proposition A, there are 46 votes, yes and zero no. Declare propositions passed unanimously. At this time, I would request that council consider adoption of the third resolution, labeled item four on your report, declaring the election results.
Do I open public comment after those results? Prior to?
You can open them and see if there's any public comment right now.
At this time, I will ask, thank you very much, if there's any one from the audience wishing to discuss the results of the election, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C-2-4 as presented.
Second.
Pardon me, was that C-2-3?
C-2-4. The consideration.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you were correct, C-2-4.
Thank you. So again, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C-2-4 as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C-2-4. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very, very much for that.
Now, before we do close on this item, we do have three. Did we need to acknowledge that also in a motion, or is that?
That's what she did.
That was just.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I'll move on to council member reports. I know we have housing authority, but why don't we, since we have a handful of people in the audience, I will ask, under council member reports, if Councilman Gallegos has anything at this time, or wish to hold until after our housing authority meeting?
I have nothing to report.
I'll hold mine till the housing authority meeting.
Mayor Protemontes?
I have one thing, real quick. I just want to say thank you to staff for helping put together the Madera County Benecino Health Week event that's going on right now at Pan Am, and everything else will wait till then. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that. I just, something very brief, as some of you may have heard, there's discussion, quite frankly, there's uproar over the possibility of losing funding for the widening of 99, starting at 12 south to 7. And so I'm going to ask at a later date that this council review and discuss possibly a letter of support sent directly to the governor, asking him to not do that. This property, this stretch, has already been for years, has been basically earmarked, and we're waiting for these additional monies to complete that. As we all know, there's a huge bottleneck that they're fixing right now on 99, but that certainly doesn't alleviate the bottleneck north of us, and certainly from 12 south to 7. It's just going to move the problem a little bit further down. The stretch of highway has been in environmental review for years, and it's close to being complete. So there's been a lot of manpower, a lot of work, and a lot of support for this, and so I'm going to ask not only the City Council, but Madera County Transportation Commission, as we speak, is putting a letter of support together, and if any or all of us could reach out to our local legislators, asking and letting them know just how imperative it is to not divert that funding anywhere else. It's very, very important to the city and county of Madera. That's all that I have. Thank you, everybody. And with that, I will take a quick two-minute recess as we move.